All righty, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order July ninth, twenty twenty four. Town of Waxahau Board of Commissioners Meeting. Greetings, everybody. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. All righty then, could I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tonight's agenda is so adopted. Next up, we have general public comments. We have three people that have signed up this evening. Public comments reserved to three minutes, directed to the board and the board only in its entirety. Keep your comments civil and polite. First up, we have Loughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. It's been many years since I got in front of such an honorable body. But back then, I was on that side and not this side, so spare me the courtesy of knowing that I don't know what I'm doing. Except, in reading your agenda for this evening, I read the proposed plans for the bypass. And I about blew coffee up my nose when I saw one of the projects was called for a bridge over the railway right behind the smokestack and in between the development and the old cotton mill. I had the pleasure of working to bring Whitehall, White Oak Nursing Home to Waxahau, one of my projects. And in working on it, the developers had worked with CSX to build a bridge over the railroad track. Lo and behold, Mother Nature was so good that they put the track about thirty or forty feet under grade. And the plans called for basically just sitting a bridge right on top of the tracks and building a bypass. They had the plans drawn, they had the plans approved by CSX. I got my hands on them and gave them to the town of Waxahau. I don't know what happened to them or where they are. But it's the most common sense proposal to build an overpass and help the downtown that I've ever seen. It would load right into the new roundabout you're planning where Old Providence Road turns off and goes south. Makes all the sense in the world. Also had the pleasure of this button was when I was in the State House, I worked with Mayor Jeanette Haynes in Waxahau, and she and I and the DOT laid out the plans for the Waxahau Parkway. It went from Highway seventy-five, where the railroad, there's a creek there at Blythe Creek. It was designed to go under the tracks there, come out where it is today, and then go on down to seventy-five and eventually to the Catawba Nation and Tableau Boulevard in Rock Hill, which would have given us a southern route to an interstate. Somebody along the line dropped the ball. But I'm here to say, forget all of this, these ideas of running through neighborhoods and building a loop-de-loop type overpass that benefits no one. Go back to the original plans, complete the parkways east and west. On the west side, take it over to Gold Mine, uh, what is, um... Oh, Gold Mine Road, not Gold Mine, but the, whatever that's called. Anyway, go right through the, there's a piece of property there that the developer, I think, would donate the land, which would help you get participation to build that leg faster. And go to the other side, where it's built all the way down and pay it in, where somebody decided to build more houses than road. Continue that route, take it over to Helms Road, go down that road to seventy-five, and you got yourself a bypass. Plus, you could get some road, you could get some urban renewal money to help clean up Helms Road, making that a four-liner, and then tie into Rehoboth Road, Rehoboth, excuse me, not my road. Tie it into Rehoboth Road, and then you got a connection to all those thousand houses y'all will prove to build down there. So anyway, I'm available if you need me, call me Mr. Mayor.
Next up, we have County Commissioner Brian Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, my name is Brian Helms. Although I currently serve on the Union County Board of Commissioners, I want to be clear that I'm here tonight representing myself in my opinion only. I came tonight to stand before you in person, publicly, not hiding behind an angry letter or social media banter, but as an adult would face adversity. And to speak on the resolution regarding the Parkway that this board passed at your last meeting. My hope is that we can all be civil, I mean, civil. On April fifteenth, the county commission took action to recommend that CARPO remove the Waxahau Parkway from their comprehensive plan, which we were entitled to do after about thirty years of vague and shifting plans. Want to cover a few points for clarification on the resolution. Number one, the general statute. The statute cited in the Waxahau resolution is irrelevant. It applies to CARPO's plan. Union County is not even required to adopt a transportation plan, much less live under this statute. A misinformed attempt to cast the county's actions as somehow in violation of a state statute seems like an effort to draw attention from the problems of the Parkway. Planning, number two. There has never, ever been a definitive long-term plan for the alignment of the Waxahau Parkway. Decisions made by municipalities don't happen in a vacuum. Waxahau has failed to properly plan for the impact of growth on schools, water, and sewer, and traffic. Now Waxahau has limited options for traffic mitigation because your unbridled growth has gotten in the way. Number three, infrastructure. Despite adding sewer capacity at twelve mile and water capacity at the Catawba, your resolution claims that the county's been negligent with infrastructure. To be clear, according to state law, the county does not have a duty to provide increased sewer capacity. When a town pushes large-scale growth, it does so with no authority to require the county to increase capacity. Your resolution seeks to blame the county for Waxahau's failure to manage growth. Number four, the Parkway. The plan is a growth facilitator. It is designed in a way that doesn't prohibit future residential development. To be clear, none of the essential infrastructure can handle the explosive growth that Waxahau is straining to incentivize. And Waxahau has no plan to pay for that growth. It seems that some of the members of this board believe that the burden to pay for your municipal growth belongs to every ratepayer and taxpayer in the county. The Union County Board of Commissioners oppose the Waxahau Parkway and the growth it promises. We stand behind that position. The plan straddles a potentially new six thousand home development. Coincidentally, the buildout for that development would take about the same time as the Parkway, that's about thirty years. Frankly, if you're for the growth of six thousand homes or more and all the costs connected to it, then publicly vote for it. I'm not for it, and the people of the county are not for it. That's why I've opposed and will continue to oppose the Parkway plan and any other plans that incentivize reckless growth because the people of Union County can't afford it. By the way, according to CARPO, our region currently sits at negative four hundred and twenty million dollars in transportation project funding. In closing, I'll say this, and I know I'm over my time. I'm elected to serve Union County residents, the current residents of all Union County, including Waxahau. The Parkway plan threatened to condemn the property of some existing Union County residents. Although some members of this board may be okay with that, my vote against this project was based in part because I will not trade existing Union County Waxahau or Mineral Springs residents for future growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, we have the Honorable Mayor Rick Becker.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners, and Manager, Clerk, and others. My name is Rick Becker, I live in the town of Mineral Springs. I'm speaking, as was Commissioner Helms, on my own behalf. Anything that I have to say would never be official policy unless my board voted on official policy. I've got a lengthy list of exhibits that I passed to Barbie to hand out, and there's two extra copies for Mr. Kelly and Mr. Hubert, just some background. But I don't have time to go through all that in three minutes. I'll just start with the really most important aspect, I think, the elephant in the room. We're asking the wrong question. The question shouldn't be, what are the alternatives for Parkway East? The question should be, why do we need Parkway East at all? Parkway East from CVS to NC seventy-five has an updated price tag of eighty-five million dollars for one point seven miles. A little background I will give. If you look at the first page of my hand, it's the Union County nineteen ninety-seven Land Use Plan. And the property, which some called the Pollogram's property, but it's others called the Pittinger Property, was earmarked for a large industrial park in Union County. And when I sat on the Union County Transportation and Safety Committee in two thousand and one, which was also co-run by the Chamber of Commerce, their interest was in developing that industrial park for economic development. And the Waxahau bypass was designed to bring traffic to that. It was not designed to mitigate congestion, there wasn't any congestion. That came later. In two thousand and three, the owner of that property, Senator Robert Pittinger, got Waxahau to annex that property in promptly, before the county had a chance to zone it light industrial, promptly had Waxahau zoned it for ultra-high density residential, and the rest is history. But at that time, twenty-one years ago, I think the need for that branch of the Waxahau Parkway evaporated because there was no industry going to be built there. So, in two thousand and eighteen, and people don't mention this enough, in two thousand and eighteen, the mayors of Waxahau and Mineral Springs, on a rare example of working together, and Bjorn Hansen of Union County, worked with South Carolina Department of Transportation, CRTPO, CSX, and got the Helms Road grade separation and overpass, the Helms Road extension, the Torrey Path extension, and the seventy-five overpass funded on the fast track as a rail project, which comes from a different pot of money from the regular STIP projects, and that is under construction now, as most of you know. Groundbreakings conducted by this board a few years ago, and Torrey Path extension is complete, Helms Road is going to begin, and the only missing link to keep that from working is about a half mile between where the current Parkway West dead ends and the proposed roundabout at Waxahau Market Road. And that can be funded through an STBGDA grant through CRTPO, and I know my board would support that. We went on record saying that when we discussed this at my board meeting. What that does is, it basically does what Parkway East would do. It addresses what Mr. Hubert and Mr. Kelly have said, is a lot of southbound traffic coming home, a lot of northbound traffic in the morning, coming from south in Union County, out in the Jars area, out in the rough edge area. And they're coming up, but if they were, if the Parkway East, as on paper now, were built, that would be about a three-point-six mile route from South Providence Road, where it meets Old Waxahau, under our vote, to the post office. If we follow the plans of Waxahau Parkway West and build the southern connector, which is on the CTP, it was placed there by Waxahau, and it should have gone through the Preserve as part of the conditional zoning application, and it didn't. So now, we're behind the eight ball on that one. When that's complete, it's four-point-five-four miles, almost the same distance. That covers all of that origin destination study traffic, and no more railroad overpass, no eighty-five million dollar price tag. It really solves a lot of problems. So that's my hope, that we would continue to leave the Waxahau Parkway East off the table, as my board has asked, and they have not rescinded their resolution, and move forward with some of these new ideas, and get the south built now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Becker. That concludes public comments, so we'll move now to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda is so approved. Next up, we have the joy of some recognitions, our town manager, Mr. Wells. I think we have a very special and somewhat somber recognition tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. And I have a few prepared words to say, and probably some ad lib things too, and hopefully I'll be able to get through it. So Melody came to work for Waxahau in twenty fourteen. She began as deputy clerk, then became town clerk, then became clerk, assistant to the town manager, and finally assistant to the town manager. She had been with the town for less than two years as deputy clerk when she accepted the reins from Waxahau's retiring town clerk of over thirty-five years. Without any loan services to the board, staff, or community, Melody began to modernize the clerk's office. She researched, implemented, and trained staff to go paperless, an efficiency and cost-saving initiative. She also set up the first digital agenda for the board and staff that greatly improved the efficiency and accuracy of the process. Melody received the Municipal Master Clerk Certification from North Carolina and the Municipal Clerk Certification from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Melody also served as president of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks, elevating her leadership skills to a new level. She earned her master's degree in public administration from Appalachian State while continuing to work full-time. Her dedication to increasing her leadership abilities and her desire to learn something new every day were recognized by management. And she was asked to take on the position of assistant to the town manager. During her time in the position, Melody's leadership skills grew exponentially. As assistant to the town manager, she assisted with budget development, developed a customer service program, developed a strategic plan for grant applications, and led the grants team, resulting in multiple grants awarded. She researched and developed a long-term solution for facilities maintenance. She helped in the development of the town's first legislative project advocacy list supporting town initiatives. She also worked hard to build leadership and management skills through various trainings and programs. Her work ethic and dedication to what she does are second to none. Melody has been an integral part of Waxahau over the last decade, and she will be greatly missed. And it is time for her to go and to utilize her professional growth to the betterment of another community. This is a great opportunity for her, she has an outstanding support network, and she is ready. Her last day in the office is this Thursday. HR has a drop-in scheduled here in the PD Community Room from one to two o'clock. That's July limit, so come in if you can, public, anybody, refreshments, cake, probably some pictures, I'm sure. Stop in and say your last goodbye, if you can. And I just want to say how fulfilling it was for me. Very fulfilling. So, it's just when you recognize somebody and you see their growth, and they get an opportunity like this, I can't be happy. So, I just want to say congratulations. You've done everything that you can do for Waxahau, now go be racing around. Mayo Dan, if you don't know where Mayo Dan is, it's the intersection of the Mayo and the Dan River, about, what, thirty minutes north of Greensboro, so not too far from the Virginia line. And she can tell you more about it if she'd like, and hopefully she'll say some words here. But just want to say how proud I am of her. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So, this has been a sweet, I'm sad to leave Waxahau. I've had a great run with Waxahau, had a lot of growth and learned a lot, and I've been given a lot of opportunities, and that's why I am here. And that's mostly because of Jeff and his mentorship of me and bringing me to this point and giving me the opportunities to have those developmental educational things that help with leadership. And so, it's been wonderful working with Waxahau, it's been like a family. And working with all of the staff, Susan, April, and so many more, and all the department heads. so many more, um, and all the department heads. It's been wonderful. I will truly miss it. I am excited about the opportunity that I have to go create something new. I was just sworn in last night as town manager for Mayo Dan, North Carolina, and so, uh, it will be a great place to go and work and join in with that team and lead them, and I'm very excited about the opportunities that present themselves. Uh, it's a town of twenty-five-hundred people, and, uh, they are a full-service municipality with lots of opportunities for, uh, projects, uh, coming along down the line, uh, that have been funded through the state and the county. And so it's, I'm looking forward to going there and being a part of Mayo Dan. So again, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you all.
Thank you very much, Melody. Spread your wings, nothing but success. Good job, Jeff. Apparently she's ready. All right, next up, uh, we have Jeff Wells again for the introduction of our new town attorney.
All right, I promise I won't tear up for you, Cindy. Not yet, but yeah. So just wanted to share, Cindy shared a short bio that I wanted to share with, uh, with the audience here and with the public and with the, uh, the board, and certainly let her, uh, say any words that she would like. But Cindy Reed is an attorney with the Urban Law Group and has extensive experience working with municipalities. At Urban Law, Cindy has focused on land use and zoning matters. Prior to joining the firm in two thousand and twenty, Cindy was the town attorney for Davidson, where she worked with the town board, mayor, and developers, as well as with the police and human resources departments. As town attorney, she was a member of the NC Municipal Attorneys Association, where she served on the Board of Directors. Previously, she was assistant city attorney for Charlotte, where she represented the engineering and finance departments. Cindy also has experience in affordable housing, having acted as the director for that program at Davidson for over twelve years, and currently serves on the Executive Board of Habitat for Humanity of the Charlotte region. She enjoys walking her dogs, hiking, and spending time with Richard, her husband of thirty-four years, and her three grown children, Annie, Will, and Emma. Cindy is a graduate of Queens University in Charlotte and Wake Forest University School of Law, and looks forward to working with the staff and town board in Waxaw. So welcome, Cindy, first meeting.
Yes. How would you like to make a point with this opportunity? Also look forward to working with staff. I'm really excited about this. Thank you.
Well, I'm very proud. We had a very extensive search. We had a lot of really great candidates, and I think it's fairly safe to say that socks were blown off when you came in the room. Your experience, your demeanor, just your skill set, it was clear when we first met you, so thank you and welcome aboard. Alrighty, so next up, we have a brief presentation by Mr. James Kelly. Uh, this is an interactive presentation with the board, so I would invite the board to ask questions as Mr. Kelly goes. Um, this will be kind of a long presentation with a lot of details and a lot of facts being presented. And the goal of this presentation is to give a little bit of background on some of the alternatives that have been discussed over the years. Some of these are new alternatives, some of these are old alternatives, but they are alternatives nonetheless of the Waxaw Parkway East. The idea is to present these to the public and to discuss them with both the board here as well as our neighbors, the county and Mineral Springs. So the goal is to just look at alternatives and see what they look like. Some of these alternatives are very realistic and very plausible. Uh, you will notice there's probably a couple that are not, um, and those are in there to basically explain and demonstrate how impactful some sort of bad choices could possibly be. Um, but without further ado, we'll kick this off to Mr. Kelly, and, um, again, I invite the board to ask questions as we go. I think what we'll do is we'll do the map, and then you can do the pros and cons, and then maybe we can discuss after you've presented the pros and cons for each.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, board. Uh, tonight, as the mayor has said, this presentation is going to be presented in a different manner, and that manner being more of a two-way conversation. Um, so feel free to ask questions, make comments as we move throughout the presentation, because it can be a lengthy presentation. We'll try to make it as short and sweet as possible. I don't think that's going to happen, but, um, we'll just move throughout the presentation as we do. So overall, to provide you an agenda of what we're going to be talking about tonight, number one, we're going to be addressing why the Waxaw Parkway is important. First and paramount, obviously, is to ensure the health and safety of the public welfare. So there are numerous recorded safety risks that we've had, especially with trains getting stuck on the tracks. We've had over four recorded incidences of that occurring even after CSX has re-profiled that intersection. So there are significant safety concerns, and that definitely can help to be addressed with the Waxaw Parkway West or what's known as the Helms Road Extension Project. Now note, that project is not currently funded. The only piece of that project that is currently funded is the, um, southern side that connects over to seventy-five via a bridge overpass. So now, if you look at the origin destination study, and we'll dive into this further as well, that Waxaw Parkway West would eliminate about a thousand vehicle trips per day from the downtown vicinity. Looking at the numbers, though, the Waxaw Parkway East, and we'll dive into this further, uh, would help to eliminate six to seven thousand vehicles per day, and then if you continue that southern piece as well, you're looking at a total of eight thousand vehicles per day for just that northeast and southeast portion. So that's really the, uh, the bigger, the bigger piece of the pie, so to say, as far as the traffic mitigation, and that would be more impactful for the region. So this really is, Waxaw Parkway is a solution to address local and regional traffic demands as well as preserve Waxaw's downtown historical nature and properties, so that we get a lot of comments on that, and we'll dive in on that as well. Furthermore, these are planned corridors, and the Waxaw Parkway will help to help increase the economic generation and vitality of Waxaw along these planned and adopted corridors. And furthermore, it would advance bicycle and pedestrian connections, and that's really the first part of the presentation, is the overall importance. The second piece of the presentation will be more of a contextual and history-based portion, and will focus on specifically a public comment log that was presented from the CRTPO back in two thousand and eighteen during the prioritization of P five-point-oh. And really, this comment log helped to lead to the two thousand and twenty-two NCDOT feasibility study, and we'll dive into that, uh, study as well. Furthermore, that study led to the CRTPO/CTP proposed amendment, and that has since been delayed due to new positions from surrounding municipalities. So we'll get into that. Again, the main point of this presentation is to work collaboratively with our neighbors and our municipal partners, so that's key. The third and final piece of this presentation, we'll talk about several, uh, potential alternatives to the Waxaw Parkway. And this was really prompted by Union County's and Mineral Springs' position that changed on the Waxaw Parkway. Ultimately, the conclusion from looking at all those alternatives will be that the proposed CRTPO/CTP amendment remains as the most optimal alignment, and note, this is the same alignment as documented within the NCDOT two thousand and twenty-two feasibility study. Any questions before we move on?
I just want to make one comment. Calling it the Waxaw Parkway might be a little confusing for people because for a long time it's been like Parkway East, Parkway West, and Parkway South, right? The two, three main pieces.
So really, yeah, so they're really, you can think of it in four different quadrants, so I'll try to specify that as we move throughout the presentation. You have the West, which is a vital piece, one thousand vehicles per day reduction. You have the Northeast, six thousand vehicle per day reduction. Southeast, which is two thousand vehicle per day reduction. And really, the southern piece, from an origin destination standpoint, if you look at the OD study, it shows a need for a north-south corridor, not necessarily a need for the east-west connector. Um, and we'll get more into that here momentarily. So again, emphasizing why is the Waxaw Parkway important? Well, again, to ensure the health and safety of the public welfare, especially when it comes to emergency response times, police and fire, and your agenda packets, there are letters from the police chief as well as the fire chief in support of the project. Um, and of course, one of the biggest challenges that Waxaw faces, um, in this particular region is the railroad crossing, or managing those at-grade versus grade-separated crossings, and those emergent, emergency services and heavy truck conflicts. So, you know, we, we've worked with Union County, we've went through an emergency management program exercise, uh, simulating what would happen in the event of a train hitting a freight on the, um, on the tracks. And the situation is not pretty with our current stance, uh, at our current stance traffic-wise. So again, as far as from a health and safety standpoint, this project is vital. In addition to that, this, the Waxaw Parkway will provide a solution to address your local and regional traffic demands. You know, it's stated quite frequently that a lot of the traffic is coming from Waxaw, and that's frankly not true. Based upon the OD study, approximately sixty-seven-point-five percent of traffic is non-local commuter and regional trips. Okay, these are non-local trips to Waxaw. And consider that the most of the traffic is actually originating outside of Waxaw. So even if, you know, we were to slow or stop development, even if you did that, that's still not going to solve your problem, especially with surrounding regions like Rock Hill in South Carolina, Lancaster, San, South Carolina, you're still going to have areas outside of both Union County's Waxaws and North, quite frankly, North Carolina's jurisdiction to be able to solve that issue. Furthermore, the Waxaw Parkway will help preserve Waxaw's downtown historical nature and properties, and ultimately, without the Parkway, as you will see, um, there are significant impacts to the overall character and quality of downtown Waxaw. Our ultimate goal and objective is to preserve Waxaw's quaint historical nature and provide a downtown atmosphere that prioritizes the pedestrian over vehicles. Furthermore, the Parkway will help to enhance the economic generation and vitality of Waxaw along planned corridors. Note that the Waxaw Parkway is called out as an economic center within the Waxaw two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, as well as an employment corridor specifically to bring jobs to the region within the Union County two thousand and fifty comprehensive plan. Furthermore, this will help to balance residential and commercial uses. So as we all know, the town of Waxaw has approximately eighty-nine, ninety percent residential versus ten to eleven percent commercial, okay? And that's an issue from a sustainability standpoint when you start looking into the future. Furthermore, the Parkway will help to advance our bicycle and pedestrian accommodation and overall network downtown. So any questions before we move on to the next piece?
Yes, um, I see, um, people often questioning this OD study. Can you just give some additional context, where that comes from, where we can, if there's a place online, it can be found, so that people really understand where these numbers are coming from?
Sure, so the OD study was, um, done by, really, we got the fundings from CRTPO to work on the OD study. So that we went through the process, the traditional process, to get the funding to do the study, and then we hired in a, um, a third-party consultant who doesn't have any bias with the town or another party in any way to perform the study and to collect the data. Now, the data is typically collected through Bluetooth or was also commonly known as toll tag data. In this case, you don't have any toll lanes or managed lanes around the area, so you have to use Bluetooth data to collect that origin and destination study. So there's, it's a multitude compilation, uh, report done by an independent, um, engineer who provided the data. So moving on to the CRTPO two thousand and eighteen Waxaw Parkway public comments, in particular from prioritization five-point-oh. So the highlight here is, you know, history shows that we can work effectively together, and we have been responsive to prior comments that have been presented. So the, the, the point of this is not to necessarily call out, um, particular comments or that sort of thing. The, the point of this is to show that in these times, we have shown historically that Waxaw, Mineral Springs, and the county can all work together despite our differences to come to a solution. So there's no reason to say that we can't, because we've done it before, and if we've done it before, we can most certainly do it again. So let's take a moment to take a look at those comments. We'll start with comment ID number nine, and that was made by former mayor Steve Maher. And granted, remember, this was back in two thousand and eighteen, leading up to the two thousand and twenty-two NCDOT feasibility study. Quote, "The jurisdictions of Waxaw, Mineral Springs, and Union County understand the importance of and need for the construction of Waxaw Parkway. We view this as a major assist to our transportation network and economic development when done in concert with the short and long-term vision for the region's directions. In two thousand and nine, Mumpo, or what's now known as Parkbo, commissioned an alignment study of the Waxaw Parkway that included technical involvement from the town of Waxaw and developed and reviewed multiple alternatives. The resulting alignment, which is the one that exists today, and we'll go dive that into that here momentarily, since has been used for planning purposes along with scoring with an STI, which is Strategic Transportation Investment Legislation for potential funding. This alignment was officially adopted by the town of Waxaw in two thousand and seventeen by action, a necessary step to place the alignment on the recently updated CTP." Now, Mayor Maher does go into state within, further in that, um, comment that there were some concerns with the public comments and public engagement, which is why we restarted the process with this proposed new alignment, making sure that everything was clearly communicated and mailings were sent to all the directed properties. So now let's move on to comment number ninety-five, which is from the Union, former Union County Union County Board of Commissioners Chairman Jeremy Simpson, back in two thousand and eighteen. An excerpt from the adopted resolution on October first, two thousand and eighteen, Union County Board of Commissioners meeting. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners, in collaboration with the municipalities of Waxaw and Mineral Springs, fully supports the Waxaw Parkway and requests that NCDOT commit to the following items." And then they list various items such as score the project, provide funding to the project, et cetera. Now let's move on to two recorded comments made by Mayor Becker of Mineral Springs. So the first comment, number ninety-seven, is essentially echoing that adopted resolution back in two thousand and eighteen. The second comment, number ninety, or excuse me, number one hundred, that says here, um, and this is from CRTPO, "Comments have been edited for brevity. A full version of the comments can be made available upon request. The jurisdiction of Mineral Springs has submitted an official comment on this, uh, project, supporting the project and endorsing CRTPO and Division Ten points being assigned to it with reservations, specifically that additional route study be conducted and public input, uh, be considered before proceeding." A hundred percent agree there, which is why we did the public engagement process in two thousand and twenty-three, and we'll get to that here momentarily. Now I quote, "This comment is my personal input on this project," referring to Mayor Becker's personal input on the project. "I too recognize and acknowledge the need for this project and support its advancement. However, the problems with the current alignment as shown on the comprehensive transportation plan, or CTP, are severe and must be addressed." One hundred percent agree with that. "I think we can all agree that the current alignment on the CTP is not the most optimal, hence why we're proposing to amend it." My request to CRTPO and NCDOT, still quoting, "Therefore is as follows. Continue to pursue construction of this Waxaw Parkway segment that is necessary to connect Highway sixteen to NC seventy-five. Acknowledge that the current route on the CTP map is highly undesirable." Completely agree. "And should not be used even as a starting point for further alignment study. Endeavor to return," now this is important, "endeavor to return Waxaw's Parkway alignment to its longstanding..." to its longstanding location, approximately one thousand to fifteen hundred feet east of Blythe Creek." Remember those numbers there. "And use that as a starting point for further alignment study. Consider favorably a route suggested by area residents that is close to the longstanding route, follows lot lines where possible, and creates minimum disruption to current properties and residences." So with that, I'll go back to the presentation, and that provides some more context and history on why the 2022 feasibility study was brought forth by NC DOT. It was brought forth due to agreeance amongst all three municipalities, Waxall, Union County, and Mineral Springs, to support what is a regional issue. And we'll dive into that here more momentarily when we look at the report. Any questions so far?
So I know you were presenting that to show the cooperation, but reading through the other comments, there was an overwhelming number that were negative about the eastern most part of this, the part that's east of Waxall Indian Trail Road. Obviously, the easy part is connecting to Waxall Indian Trail Road from the existing little piece, but yeah, that's the real controversial part.
Completely agree, and the goal really is, and we'll dive this into this momentarily here, is minimizing impact to property owners, which was a concern brought forward by the current Union County Board of Commissioners as they do not wish to relocate existing residences. Okay, that's one of their main concerns. Another one of their main concerns that was brought forward is also development, and we'll talk about that here momentarily, in particular, the property that was brought up prior.
James, I think, so 2018 was that when the whole treehouse, they called it, property, is that the, and Mayor Becker, I mean, I know he and I went and visited the property. Is that where we're talking about the Snow White?
That's correct, and we'll have a map on that on slide number seven to show exactly where that existing line is today. And Mineral Springs voiced opposition to that existing line, and I completely agree with them there because that line is not most optimal.
So at the time, I know you're going to show the map, but that, so that alignment was going straight through that neighborhood, right? And so that was impacting, and so you're going to point at how many houses that was impacting, and then the new alignment that this board has approved eliminates that, right? Is that what we're?
Correct, and we'll talk more about the property impacts versus the existing versus what was proposed. You're not going to eliminate one hundred percent, you never will. It's about mitigating how many properties are impacted. Moving on to the NC DOT 2022 feasibility study, H15208. So this study was conducted by the North Carolina Department of Transportation in response to prior comments that were made in support of the project. Now, we're not going to dive through the entire report. We are going to highlight, however, some key points, and that being 1.2, section 2.0, which is the purpose and need, 2.1, previous studies, and 6.0, recommendations. So note that this project's scoping technical, technical report is a preliminary document, and it is the initial step in the planning and design process. And any concepts that come out of this document are simply concepts. They are conceptual drawings that are subject to change. So let's start with section 1.2. 1.2 provides the background of the project. So the project is included within the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization's CRTPO 2050 Comprehensive Transportation Plan as a recommended boulevard. During a past corridor alignment study to include the proposed project in the CTP, the town of Mineral Springs voiced opposition to the project while the town of Waxall was in support. So I agree, that existing line that Mineral Springs voiced opposition to is, again, not optimal, and we'll dive into that here in just a second. The project is not included in the CRTPO 2050 MTP, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Moving on to section two, the purpose and need for the project. "The segment of NC sixteen in the town of Waxall experiences notable congestion in peak hours. Based on the express design traffic analysis report, congestion is expected to increase along NC sixteen through the year 2045. The EDTA report identifies the majority of intersections along NC sixteen in the horizon year of 2045 without the project." The project referring to Waxall Parkway, in particular, the east portion. "Those intersections will reach a level of service of E or F." What does that mean? Not just the intersection of sixteen and seventy-five we're talking about. No, we're talking about multiple intersections along the sixteen corridor will fail without the project. Let that sink in just for a second. Without the project, it will fail. With the project, reading on, "The level of service at the majority of intersections along sixteen improves over the no-build alternative." So a frequent comment that we get is, well, isn't it already failed? No, the average level of service at sixteen and seventy-five is actually a level of service of D, so it's going to get much worse before it gets better. Tack on the sixteen widening project, and it's going to get even more worse. Now, the Waxall Parkway West project will help to provide some alleviation. Mathematically, it will not solve your problem. It does help provide some crucial safety improvements, however. So quite frankly, what this report is saying is that if you do nothing, it will fail, and it will get much worse before it gets better. The purpose, now this is important, the purpose and need of the project are to alleviate congestion on NC sixteen and to improve what? Improve regional mobility. These are regional trips. This is within NC DOT's report. Now let's scroll down to, you know, there's some disclaimers here that this is just a preliminary scoping report, and the concepts are what they are, they're concepts. Nothing has been said on the stamp. Looking at section 2.1, you know, there's previous studies that this has been identified in, and if we, if we keep reading down just a little bit, you know, it talks about the Waxall origin destination study, it talks about Union County 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and that recognizes the proposed project is not included in the CRTPO MTP, but notes that the county and municipalities support the project. Now, from this report, it was concluded back in 2022 that there was a most optimal alignment, and that alignment was recommended by all the municipalities. So let's scroll on down to section 6.0, which is the recommended section. "Based on input from local agencies, the town of Waxall and the town of Mineral Springs, the recommended concept to move forward into further design if the project moves forward would be concept A2 plus B3.1." Remember those numbers and letters. "This option would construct a two-lane road on a four-lane right-of-way from NC sixteen to NC seventy-five with a crossing over the CSX Railroad. This is the highest-cost concept developed. At the time, was forty-eight million in construction, two-point-four in utility relocation, and twenty million for right-of-way. Now's today's numbers, as we've seen through inflation, you're looking at eighty-five million. The cost of this project is not going down, it's only going up, and the longer we wait, the more risk there is to public health and safety, and the more risk there is to not solving our congestion issue downtown, and that will affect businesses." And there's a letter provided to you tonight within your agenda packet from the Waxall Downtown Business Association, supporting the project. So let's take a look at the concept that was recommended. So this is the concept, A2, B3.1. And note, again, this is just a concept, and it provided in your handout this evening is this on a larger view, so that way you can see it more closely. Remember that a thousand to fifteen hundred feet east of Blythe Creek number that we mentioned before? Well, this alignment is located approximately twelve hundred feet east of Blythe Creek, to the quoted longstanding location. Here's that displayed in more of a simplified manner, and you can see over there to the northeast is what's known as the Waxall Meadows Plantation, and that is Mineral Springs's jurisdiction. To the southeast, not to be confused with the Waxall Meadows Plantation, is also a neighborhood called Waxall Meadows. That red dotted line that you see is the existing CRTPO CTP alignment, and that was voiced in opposition by Mineral Springs, and I agree with them there. That is not the most optimal alignment because look how many properties it impacts in the Waxall Meadows Plantation, plus all those properties in unincorporated Union County, and Union County is correct, that leads directly into the Fister property. The proposed alignment, the CRTPO's CTP amendment, is what's shown in blue. That impacts roughly three properties outside of Waxall's jurisdiction. So let me bring up my mouse here real quick. So number one is currently in unincorporated Union County as an undeveloped parcel. Number two is what's now in Mineral Springs's jurisdiction. It wasn't before, it was recently annexed by Mineral Springs a few months ago, and so was number three. Two and three were originally within Union County's jurisdiction. Those two parcels have been recently annexed by Mineral Springs. This property down here, what you may be asking is, well, aren't you impacting residents down here? And the answer is no, because Waxall owns this parcel. All of this parcel here, this one, that one, that one, we all, Waxall, town of Waxall owns that piece, and then of course, it switches back into Waxall's jurisdiction. So essentially, you know, we can look at all the various alignments you want. What other alternative, the key question to remember, is what other alternative is better than the proposed CRTPO amendment, especially when it comes to property impacts? We're impacting three potential properties in this particular case with the proposed amendment versus what you'll see twenty, thirty, a hundred-plus properties. The goal, remember, is to minimize the impact to property owners while maximizing the traffic pull away from downtown Waxall. And this is the CRTPO CTP proposed amendment based on concept A2 and B3.1 from the 2022 NC DOT feasibility study. Now that process, that CRTPO procedural amendment process, has been delayed due to Mineral Springs's and Union County's new position on the Parkway. Even though we went through the public engagement process and out-there mailers did follow the process accordingly, and a majority public support was achieved for this proposed amendment through the CRTPO CTP procedural amendment process. Let's talk about that. Here's that process. Yeah, it started back in April of last year. It was supposed to conclude in November of last year. Here we are in July. How much longer do we have to wait? There's only three more steps in the process that remain that we've already agreed to. We have to go to CRTPO for an FYI, we have to go to TCC for a recommendation, and then CRTPO for action. Three steps remain to conclude this thirty-year-plus-long process. Remember, this isn't the first time we looked at this. This originated originally back in nineteen ninety-two. We have documents that show those records. Now, specifically, I'm honing in on the 2018 to 2024 region because that's when you can see more of the recent history. Questions before we move on to the third part of the presentation?
What would be the very earliest, you know, according to the schedules of CARPO and NC DOT, that shovels would go in the ground for this?
So you must consider that this is part of the CTP process. So it's a multi-step process that we've covered before, you go from CTP to MTP to TIP. So CTP would conclude a thirty-to-fifty-year-plus process. You then move on to the MTP, which is about a twenty-year process, TIP, ten years. So really, you're looking at about twenty to thirty years prior, if you go forward with a state and federally funded route.
And if it's not state and federally funded, what are the options?
It could be expedited. At what cost?
How do we expedite that because we can't afford it?
Well, right now, as far as the Waxall Parkway, Waxall Parkway West, when we submit for grant funding, the CRT, we are, the town is submitting a substantial proportion for CRTPO grant local match. So there are local match potentials. Now I will say, as far as the CRTPO process, they have restrictions on the amount of money you can go through throughout the traditional process. Now there are other steps as part of IIJA and various federal and acts and railroad crossing elimination programs that are out there. So there are other avenues as well.
As an example, could you enlighten us when the widening of sixteen was greenlit? When it was officially greenlit to be paid for and put on the schedule?
So right now, the current programming, now I'll add a grain of salt here, and you'll see what I mean here momentarily, is that the current programming is scheduled to start construction fiscal year 2029.
And when was that date established is the question?
That was established back in 2023 when DOT said, hey, we're out of money. And now guess what they're saying again? Hey, we're out of money. So, so we'll see how that progresses. The key thing to remember is, and what will likely be moved forward with, is projects based upon seniority. And what I mean by that is projects from P3 will outrank projects within P4, P5, et cetera. So really, P5 was the last one on the list.
Just so people know, that's the priority listing.
That's right.
That's the priority listing that CARPO goes through to establish which projects they're going to fund or most likely fund. So I think, what is it, the widening of sixteen is on, is that P5?
No, the widening of sixteen was not on P5. I want to say it was on P3 or P4. I know for a fact that the Helms Road grade separation crossing is on P4.
So the grade crossing, P4 was how many years ago?
You know, each process is about two years. Remember, six got skipped because of the COVID-19 pandemic and some funding issues that popped up there. P7.0, we're going to see funding issues here. So if we back it every two years, I don't know, that puts you around, I'll have to look at the exact year, around 2015, 2017, give or take.
So that, that was greenlit financially by CARPO in 2015, and how it's just finally getting?
That's right, it's a long process. It's a long process.
It's about ten years, exactly. So once they agree to fund stuff, it can be over ten years before actually dirt is moved.
That's correct. Things do not happen overnight.
It function in the first place.
That's correct. Any other questions before we move on to the actual alternative piece of the presentation? Seeing none? So as a part of the Waxall Parkway alternatives, you know, we must ensure that we are genuinely considering other alternatives in the manner of good faith. And, you know, we were asked by the mayor, as long with other people, to explore, other municipalities in particular, to explore Waxall Parkway alternatives. And simply removing the Waxall Parkway is not an option. In response to Union County and Mineral Springs's recent comments that there are alternatives more favorable than the proposed feasibility alignment and decision to remove the Parkway from regional planning, seven new conceptual roadway layouts were created, and these layouts will be used if the Parkway is removed from the CTP. Now I will note that some alternatives were drafted after receiving input from a Mineral Springs's board meeting on April the eleventh, particularly alternative two, which is codenamed the ski trail route, as well as alternative four, which is a modification of the creek route. Note that at the Union County Board of Commissioners meeting on April fifteenth, 2024, no solutions were proposed by the Union County BOC. So when looking at these alternatives, you know, we have to look at various criterion. Obviously, one of the most impactful criterion are right-of-way and property impacts, okay? You know, that's the whole point of why we're proposing the, the blue line amendment. You must also look at the historical district impacts. You must also look at the historical district impacts to Waxall and Waxall business impacts as well. Furthermore, you must also look into pedestrian safety. You know, if we wanna continue to prioritize the pedestrian over the vehicle, then pedestrian safety is a must and we have an adopted pedestrian plan for that. In addition, traffic improvements, FEMA impacts, bridge impacts, et cetera. So let's take a look at alternative one. Essentially, alternative one would extend Broom Street South and tie into the proposed roundabout, NCDOT roundabout project U sixty-two forty-eight. I will note that that alignment does go through South Providence School to achieve those speed requirements. It also impacts several properties. So let's talk about, um, in particular, you know, at sixteen and seventy-five, you will have historical property impacts there.
And just to clarify, there was some discussion about that South Providence School maybe moving locations or potentially no longer utilizing that land?
That's what I heard, I don't know for certain.
So that may or may not be true.
It's just a rumor we've heard for years, but there's been nothing concrete ever with that.
Okay.
So various pros and cons for alternative one. Well, it does utilize the proposed sixty-two forty-eight, that roundabout project design. It does utilize some existing roadways and right of ways. It is one hundred percent within Town of Waxall limits. And it does help to remove those heavy westbound rights that are currently constrained by our historical bridge downtown. Some cons to this is you're gonna have over thirty privately owned parcels impacted. And essentially, you will not provide any relief to downtown congestion with this alternative. Why? Because you're still going through sixteen and seventy-five and you're still constricted by the roundabout there at Old Providence. And in addition to that, this alignment would directly impact the South Providence School and impacts the historical district downtown. It does not remove any traffic volume from the intersection of sixteen and seventy-five. And the conflict remains between heavy traffic volume and downtown pedestrian activity. Furthermore, we're not providing any grade separated crossings with this, with this solution. You'll still have that grade crossing with the railroad conflict. Comments, questions on alternative one? Moving on to alternative two, which is the proposed ski trail route, which was recommended at a Mineral Springs board meeting by some of the people at that meeting. In particular, when we're looking at this route, you'll see that it gets a bit lengthy. And a majority of these roadways are actually privately maintained, they're not public roadways. There is no public right of way for some of these roadways in particular. Mill Pond, if we continue on to a portion of Grover Rogers. Now Grover Rogers, it does pick up to be some public right of way there. Ski Trail is obviously privately maintained.
So Mill Pond and portions of Grover Rogers.
So Ski Trail, there's a, right there at the intersection of sixteen and Ski Trail. There's a few feet of publicly maintained right of way. And that's likely due to maintenance reasons with DOT.
A few feet, we're halfway there.
Yeah, we're halfway there. Mill Pond is entirely privately maintained.
And then you're, so you're saying Ski Trail is also privately maintained?
Except for that one piece at the intersection of sixteen.
A few feet, yeah.
Now Grover Rogers, there is a divide there, so those roads actually do not connect today. So that's another issue to traverse, is that you would have to connect those roads to existing neighborhoods. And then Grover Rogers does pick up to be some type, some of public right of way. Now granted, with a four lane divided road section, or really even a three lane section that's shown here, those right of way impacts will be significant. And then, of course, going to McNeely, routing to Collins, you get the point. It's a long detour, it's over four miles versus less than two miles for, for the proposed northeast Waxall Parkway. Some pros are that it utilizes existing roadways. That's a pro. Uh, removes some traffic, not nearly as much as you really need, from the downtown between north on NC sixteen and east on NC seventy-five. There's, hey, there's no impacts of the historical district and this was a proposed option from the Mineral Springs board meeting. Some cons, you're going to impact well over one hundred properties. Ski Trail and Mill Pond are private roads, large right of way acquisition costs to consider there. The connection to NC seventy-five is further away from downtown and will not meet the intent of the OD study. And you will not get as much traffic pull away from downtown. So you'll still have that issue as well. You wouldn't be able to meet the speed limit minimums for an NC route designation vision. So we've always had a vision to incorporate Waxall Parkway to an NC sixteen route designation vision. And to do that, you must be able to meet certain speed limit requirements and thresholds. This route, no matter how you do it, won't be able to meet those requirements. In addition, this is a very long route where you'll have slow speeds and connection further east will not pull as much traffic off of downtown. There's multiple stream crossings and FEMA floodplain impacts. There's multiple intersection improvements and realignments that will be required. The proposed footprint is still not within town limits, it is within other municipal limits as well. And there will be significant traffic added to neighborhood roads. So it's an option. What are your thoughts on alternative two?
I'm like dumbfounded, to be honest. And I don't understand why Mineral Springs would propose such a thing when they were against, uh, one that had, went through less houses and now they wanna affect over a hundred houses? And I, I don't know how many of y'all have been on Ski Trail, but I mean, these are people with large tracts of land with fa, um, barns and animals and I don't even understand where that came from. No way.
Any other comments before we move on to alternative three?
Well, as I said earlier, some of these ideas are more realistic than others. But it's good to get a sense of perspective when you look at how to solve this problem.
Alternative three, um, is a modification of what a lot of people call, well, why don't you just make North Providence one way and make, um, NC sixteen one way? Well, if you were to make North Providence one way, you're still unable to solve that grade separation issue. So the alternative is, okay, if we're unable to solve the grade separation there, um, excuse me, North Church Street, then you have to move over to North Providence Street and that side. And if you start to look into, um, this a little bit deeper, what you'll see is that traffic, you're proposing no northbound traffic, so traffic cannot make a right here. Instead, all that traffic would be diverted this way, one way, up and over the railroad tracks and tie into Howie Mine. And then back into North Providence Street, roundabout, back into the downtown system. Which again, you're not solving your downtown congestion issue, you're just moving it. And there's other issues there that we're gonna talk about here momentarily. So pros, proposed footprint is within town limits. Um, it does allow the dual southbound lefts on sixteen and seventy-five to exist. You still have the issue with the receiving lanes that we've been talking about, so you will have historical property impacts. It removes the heavy westbound rights that currently, that are currently constrained by the historical bridge. Cons, over thirty plus privately owned parcels impacted. The impacts at NC sixteen and seventy-five intersection would still be required. The white, the westbound through lane would not be able to shift, um, north with the existing taper for the westbound right. And then you would still have another lane shift issue for the westbound throughs. What does that mean? That means, you know, you have all that traffic going north and the traffic coming south. How are you going to reroute people back into that system? You're still not solving the issue. Now I know a lot of people like to propose the one-way route solutions. With the constraints of the railroad, it makes it very challenging to fully address the issue. Railroad coordination is another con, and you still wouldn't be solving the southbound traffic with an at-grade crossing. Impacts to the historical district and downtown businesses, likely impacts to Waxall Mills and Old Town Village. Significant impacts to Emmett's. Improvements will likely be needed at NC sixteen and Price Street. And of course, you're creating a new traffic pattern on existing roads that'll be very confusing for drivers. And you're not meeting drivers' expectations. And one of the key components as far as traffic engineering is to meet drivers' expectations and add a layer of system redundancy. Why? Because it increases the overall safety of your network and limits the amount of crashes and high severity collisions that we see. In addition, congestion will still be present downtown with heavy truck and pedestrian conflicts. So thoughts on alternative three?
I actually had a question on the alternative two.
Sure, go back up.
Uh, you had said that it impacts more residents. So impacts in what sense of the word, they're affected how? Do they have to leave their homes or are we buying right of way?
In some cases, yes, the homes would be impacted. Um, in other cases, you're buying right of way essentially up to their doorstep. Going back to alternative three, anything before we move on to alternative four? Alternative four, getting a little bit better. Revised the Waxall Parkway East alignment to be out of Mineral Springs, as we've done before. Here's the issue. You know, this is a modification of another proposed option, which was named the creek route at the Mineral Springs meeting on April the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Obviously, you cannot put the road in the creek, so you have to either shift it east or west. Now we've looked at the east and we've agreed to the east and that has been documented as the most optimal solution. So now we're looking at an alternative to the west. And the west, you know, you're still going to be impacting unincorporated Union County, in particular, these parcels here. Large FEMA impacts in this particular area, wetland impacts, environmental impacts. And, um, you know, you, now you're impacting the Waxall Meadows subdivision. Again, not to be confused with the Waxall Meadows Plantation. So you'll have to go back through the process and what do you think is going to happen when you bring this forward to community engagement? Pros and cons, utilizes existing roadways, check. Proposed footprint is out of Mineral Springs, check. There's still some portions within Union County. Uh, it does tie NC seventy-five closer to downtown. And this was a similar concept proposed at the Mineral Springs board meeting. Cons, over twenty plus privately owned parcels impacted. Uh, there's feasibility and CRTPO CTP process that we've gone through would essentially start again. So now you have further delay over a problem that we know will fail by year twenty forty-five. And this will likely, you know, result in the same conclusion that we've had, which is that the original proposed amendment that has been originally agreed to and documented is the most optimal. Significant traffic will also be added to neighborhood roads. Railroad coordination FEMA, heavy FEMA, uh, wetland impacts here. And based on impacts to the Waxall Meadows subdivision along Deer Creek Drive, we will be in a worse position from a community engagement perspective. Cause we're impacting a whole neighborhood versus three parcels that are outside of Waxall's jurisdiction. There is unlikely potential with this route, now let me note this, there is unlikely potential with this route to continue traffic south to meet the OD's study. So remember that was one of the key factors of the OD study is a north-south corridor need, not an east-west corridor need. There was a need for a north-south corridor, as identified within the OD study. And, you know, this still does not account for a four lane cross section. This is just a three lane cross section, so you're not getting as much capacity per se there, um, from a traffic standpoint. And it doesn't account for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We could account for that, there would be significant, there would be even more impacts if we did that. Constructibility concerns as well as long-term viability concerns. So we are getting better, um, but what are your thoughts on alternative four?
I mean, one of the upsides with this one is that it makes the bridge shorter. And then maintaining elevation to get over seventy-five, you know, for a road which is a short bridge.
Sure, that's.
I don't know what that would do to the cost, shorter bridge could be cheaper.
Typically, you know, when people think of costs as far as going over and under, you know, a lot of people think that going under railroad tracks as far as a tunnel is a lot cheaper. I'll just tell you quite frankly, you're always gonna have more expense going under than you are over. So as far as bridge impacts, sure, yeah, you'll have some more cost there with bridge. And the overall picture though, is negligible. Altern, alternative four B, which is really a variation of alternative four. So we're following the same kind of a Waxall Parkway, um, existing roadway there and then looping it down. Some issue here is we, we go back into unincorporated Union County in this particular area. You know, there's a donut hole here, unincorporated Union County. And you're still, you're impacting, you know, you're impacting several properties. You're impacting the, um, nursing home. You're impacting the townhomes that are already built and are privately owned. And so in addition to that, you're also going to, if you do move forward with this alignment on the other side of the roadway here, this particular roadway is what's known as the Seven Hills Development. Now that development has already gone through the majority of the process as far as approval. So you will run high legal risk if you proceed with this alternative. So some pros, avoids majority of FEMA floodplain impacts. Proposed footprint is still out of Mineral Springs, still sections within Union County. Cons, you're gonna have over twenty plus parcels impacted. You're definitely going to have high legal risk, uh, with the Seven Hills development. You impact the White Oak Nursing Home. You impact the townhomes at Union Central Court. And of course, you have railroad coordination, bridge work. And essentially, this also does not provide adequate intersection spacing to the existing intersection of Hermitage Place Drive, which is right about there. So, you know, that's another thing to consider. Thoughts on alternative four B? Moving on to alternative five. Alternative five is to construct a new roadway from Howie Mine to Old Providence Road. So you can see, we're still running into some issues here. We're still rerouting that traffic downtown as far as avoiding going through all these properties here that are existing today. You know, we run into historically disadvantaged communities along Howie Mine and that's a topic that will be important. You run into the mills and then you're back at the same, same problem with the roundabout there, which is not solving your capacity issue. So let's talk about the pros and cons for this. You know, it utilizes the existing roundabout U sixty-two forty-eight design. Proposed footprint is within town limits. There's less impacts of the historical district, that's a plus. And you do get that grade separated rail crossing. Cons, there's gonna be over thirty plus privately owned parcels impacted. You're gonna have railroad coordination, you're gonna have some vertical impacts to Howie Mine, uh, which raise constructibility and feasibility concerns. You will definitely have capacity concerns along Howie Mine Road, particularly at NC sixteen and Providence Road intersections. Capacity concerns at the U sixty-two forty-eight project with heavy approach added. Multiple road realignments, including Pearl Street, heavy impacts to the Mill District. Heavy impacts to historically underserved communities and could be considered a regressive approach to right of way acquisition. Um, a part of this approach, do you think the state and feds are going to donate or give you money for this particular project? If you move forward with that type of approach? Likely no, especially from the federal agencies. And you're still going to have congestion downtown. So thoughts on alternative five? Hearing none, moving on to alternative six, which quite frankly is just ridiculous. I'll go ahead and say that now, if the other ones haven't been ridiculous already. You know, it's clear that we've exhausted our technical, um, capabilities here. This is purely a political project and that much is clear. Alternative six calls to widen NC seventy-five to a four lane divided section from Rehoboth to Old Providence Road. Now to do this, which is quite frankly ridiculous. But if you did do this, you would impact your entire historic downtown and all your downtown businesses. So pros and cons, significantly increases your capacity along seventy-five, that's a, that's a plus. Proposed footprint is within town limits. Some cons, thirty plus privately owned parcels are impacted. Significant impacts to the historical downtown and downtown businesses, quite frankly, they would be gone. It does not remove any traffic volume from the intersection of sixteen and seventy-five, so you still have that issue. You still have the conflict that remains between heavy truck, uh, heavy traffic volume and downtown pedestrian activity. And you're not addressing the railroad safety conflicts with grade separated crossings. So do we really have to spend that much more time on this alternative?
Ridiculous.
Here's a visual perspective of what that would look like. So potential impacts to road widening to the historical downtown district. If you decided to widen, of course, you have to consider that's a, that's a four lane divided section. So there would be a median in between with pedestrian. with pedestrian accommodation on top of that. So you know, here's the existing lane today. Consider that you have a median in there too, along with um, another lane added on top of that. More pedestrian infrastructure involved and uh, etcetera. You'll be at this red line before no time. And if you impact that much of the property, quite frankly, you have to take the whole property. So with this alternative, it is quite frankly ridiculous. We know what the most optimal alignment is and that has originally been agreed to and documented. And we know that we can work together before because we've done it in the past.
I think one of the things that this alignment highlights more importantly is the need for that south stretch to tend to the east-west traffic. So in the next forty years, we know the growth is coming. So if we want these hundred-year-old buildings to live through two hundred years, the south stretch is something we also need to be thinking about as well.
Sure. I will, I will note that the a hundred percent agree there. Um, I will also note that you know, the, the main problem now is the north-south traffic, particularly from a regional mobility perspective as documented within the feasibility studies by NC.
There's a lot more jobs in Charlotte than there is in Lancaster.
That's exactly right. You got it. Everybody's coming, you know, from Monroe, from Lancaster, from uh, Rock Hill. They're all going north sixteen in the morning to Charlotte and south in the afternoon. Any questions or comments from the board? I think that pretty much wraps up your presentation.
We still have just a little bit left. Uh, did you want to ask a question before?
You can finish up first.
So conclusions, um, the CRTPO CTP proposed amendment is the most optimal alignment. To ensure a successful implementation, fostering collaboration and support through a review of the documented solution will aid with ensuring a mutual understanding and alignment on objective strategies and expected outcomes. And by working collaboratively, Union County, Mineral Springs, and Waxall, as well as other stakeholders, can ensure an equitable and beneficial outcome for this entire region. It is a regional issue. And by working together to oversee the implementation of the solution, this will ensure that each area's interests are considered and addressed. And maintaining open and transparent communications among all stakeholders is vital. Regular updates and meetings can help everyone to keep informed about pro- progress, challenges, and various adjustments as needed. Furthermore, all prior analysis continues to support the Waxall Parkway as the primary solution to addressing safety and congestion concerns. And again, without the Waxall Parkway project, most intersections along sixteen will operate at a level of service ERF so that they'll fail by year twenty forty-five. Whereas with the project, the intersection level services improve over the no-build condition. Now, alternatives have been explored since nineteen ninety-two, well, over thirty-plus years. We got a little snapshot in time as far as recent history from twenty eighteen. And uh, you know, we've created a strong argument for the proposed CRTPO CTP amendment, which is that blue line shown before. My question to the board is, do we want to start the process over again? And if so, what other alternative is better than the proposed CRTPO amendment? And I'll pause there.
Well, um, as I'm looking at the maps, and I did come up with something and
Okay.
obviously you guys are the engineers, so you'll tell me. Uh, if you go back to the slide that shows the parcels one, two, and three, and it shows which ones are affected the least.
Oh, yeah, that's one.
Uh, this one, yes. So as I'm looking at it, so north of the number one, right, that blue line goes through that property and it continues over that.
It, it connects to the existing Waxall Parkway, yep.
So that does affect those, those tracks as well, correct?
That's correct. With that said, though, that is within Waxall's jurisdiction and it is the board's capability to maintain what happens within that jurisdiction.
Okay. So when I looked at GIS, it looks like the current Parkway where it ends um, above the Belk property.
Okay.
Okay. Is it possible to continue that part Waxall Parkway through that Belk property to Waxall Indian Railroad? Then follow that up to, I guess there's that um.
McNeely and Collins?
And it's actually um, Pleasant Grove.
Yeah, so it's kind of a fusion of that.
It's kind of a fusion of a couple of alignments. So if you put a roundabout by Waxall Indian Trail Road from the Belk property.
Yep.
Follow that up, another roundabout. We know we love our roundabouts enough here. It's by, by Waxall Bible there. It's kind of a weird roadway as it is now. Then you could probably do, you could go Pleasant Grove to Potter to seventy-five. You can go down McNeely to seventy-five. Or you could take McNeely to Collins to seventy-five and maybe put some type of controlled signal or traffic, either a light or whatnot, another roundabout.
We've looked at that. Um, and you know, we, we looked at that from an origin destination perspective. And could you get from the existing Waxall Parkway to Waxall Indian Trail Road pretty easily? Yes, because that's within our jurisdiction. The issue comes when you have the multi-jurisdictional uh, concerns. Now, from an OD perspective, you know, you want to maximize your traffic pull away from Waxall. And even if you look at the NCDOT feasibility report, you'll see that there are projected volumes for if you just went to Waxall Indian Trail. And you're only talking about two thousand trips per day versus a projected eight thousand trip, trip per day reduction if you carried through to seventy-five. So the impact there, again, from a mathematical standpoint, the numbers just don't work.
Well, I'm thinking about trying to come up with a solution immediately or closer to immediately than thirty years and cheaper. Um, because we'll have the west going, right? Jeff, I mean, how far are we out from getting that funded, would you say? Not to put you on the spot, but you, you know.
Well, so there's a, another fall call coming up and we're going to spend the latter part of the summer preparing for that fall call and that, that will come with a request of support from the Board of Commissioners to uh, put funding in for Waxall Parkway West. So uh, from the, the funding standpoint, as far as the percentages required, we can afford to do that. I would have to defer to the engineers on the timing question of it though.
Right. So I'm saying that's closer. I mean, that's, that's within sight, you know, as far as we can tell. I mean, it's not thirty years out. We're not talking thirty years, correct?
That's correct. So the Waxall Parkway West in particular, you know, if we did apply and were granted CRTPO funds this fall, that's about a five-year project. Now, there are ways to expedite that in accordance with general statute. There are ways to expedite that project. Um, and that can only be explored if the project is given a STIP number. And that STIP number process comes from the CRTPO award.
And that would be in the fall?
And that would be in this fall and then projected, they typically release the results and you're looking at December, January timeframe as far as the results.
Right, because I'm thinking, you know, we can only control what we can control, right? And so if we can get that going and be aggressive with that, it will alleviate some traffic. In the meantime, we can work on solutions on the east. I think we should be, we're gonna be able to do two things at once.
I completely agree there.
And, and, and then that'll connect because CSX is always already taking care of that overpass, right? And so emergency vehicles, it has to be fit for that. So trucks can be re- rerouted that way.
One hundred percent agree, especially since the firehouses is located, there's a firehouse there located on Parkway West. One hundred percent agree, that is a very, very effective short-term solution.
Right. And so in the meantime, if we can't get obviously, the goal is to get everybody on the same page and to get our neighbors on board. But if that can't happen, is, this should be viable to help us.
One hundred percent agree.
Because I think we might have to give a little bit in order just to get a solution in because, you know, we need it.
Yep, completely agree, everything with what you're saying there. Waxall Parkway West is vital and on our master transportation plan, it's ranked within the tier-one categories. So if that's more achievable in the short-term solution, definitely we will proceed that and we have recommended to submit that project this fall.
And so my idea, I think, could work. I mean, it's not exactly.
So as far as a continuation of that idea, yes, you're right. Uh, with that said, though, you have to still consider, would people actually use that route? Because you must consider the north-south corridor as the primary roadway. So you would essentially be sending people south and then really far east out of their way to come back to where they wanted to go, which is south.
People will use it because they don't want to sit in traffic. I know I've, I, you know, I used to take my dog to Camp Bark and I went way around to avoid the traffic, you know, to get onto seventy-five or possibly, you know, wait for the train. People will use it and I think it has the least amount of impacts. The roads are there, it gives at least three alternatives to get to seventy-five. And when you combine that with west, I think we have a good, eh, you know, solution in the short term where it's needed. Because projects have been greenlit, Emerson's coming.
So in the short term, yes.
That Parkway isn't going to be done anytime near that project.
Yes, I would agree, it will take some traffic off two thousand vehicles per day to precise versus the six to eight thousand vehicles per day. You will still have the same problem that you face today. In the long run, yes, we can provide some short-term relief, just realize that to be successful, you must also have the eastern, eastern component as well.
What happened with the southern piece though, you know, that would go from where Helms Road bypass is gonna be over towards Old Providence?
So let me pull up the uh, the full picture here. So here's the, you know, there's a lot on this visual and realize that everything that we're talking about is conceptual, right? It's conceptual and subject to change. So if you were, so there's the, there's the blue line alignment right there, right? At J Hooks into seventy-five. Now, like MLK Boulevard towards Monroe, the idea based on the OD's study and NCDOT's feasibility study would be to continue that south and tie into where that traffic is really going, which is down here to Old Waxall, uh, Monroe Road. And then tie into these roadways as well because again, that traffic is primary, is primarily north and south traffic, not necessarily east and west traffic. Did that help answer your question?
Right, just so to be clear, the, I guess, alternative seven would be mine, my idea, is that what?
So that would be alternative eight.
Oh, eight?
Yep, well, yeah, because we had four B in there, so that's seven, but.
And I see the number like that. Um, it, it would give three different alternatives to go east, correct?
Again, back to the point, yes, we can go east all we want, the primary corridor is still north-south.
So this would be putting a Band-Aid on.
It's just a Band-Aid.
It's a Band-Aid solution on the, on the main problem, which is?
Which is the north-south.
At the end of the day, that would give you more alternatives.
It would give you a short-term solution to a long-term problem without addressing the long-term problem and dealing with that, which is going to be a better solution for regionally and also for those who live here and safety-wise and help with the traffic that is coming when NCDOT, probably twenty twenty-nine, if that's the, the year now, it's been pushed back three or four times since I've been here, um, widens the road. So now are there communities and things in that alternative number seven route that was just suggested that would be affected by all this traffic? Not just, not going through the community, but maybe going through the street, going through the, you know, those back roads back there?
Correct, there would be, and if you, if you impact any of those properties, you have to start the process over.
The process all over again.
Yep.
Well, we're impacting.
Three.
I'm sorry?
Three with the.
Well, with mine, you'd be impacting one and yes, there'll be traffic, a little bit more traffic.
There are more communities and areas back there except for one. And there are roads back there and then you've got to account for the fact that it's not even on the STIP.
It's not even on the CTP. So i- if you go through this route, of course, that will you're essentially be traveling, having people go north to come south. Um, you know, if you widen the roadway, which is just an existing two-lane road today, you will have right-of-way impacts, you'll have the same impacts that we're facing today. So does getting us to Waxall Indian Trail provide some relief along with the western bypass? Absolutely it does. In the long term though, you must consider what the root cause of the problem is and the root cause is the north-south direction.
And so what happens if we can't make it happen?
Intersections will fail.
Right, so if that should happen, wouldn't this alternative be something that we should do?
But in, but in the resolution of trying to move forward with the project, the goal now is to get it on the list so that we can hopefully move forward with this. That's the goal. Is to get it on the list. How and what happens after that? Then we will work through that process, but to get it on the list so that we don't have to start another process all over again and it won't take us another thirty, forty, or fifty years to try and move something forward to help with this regional, not just Waxall, issue.
I mean, the big thing is it would take, what Commissioner Wedger was proposing, would take this project and basically chop it in two. One, very quick and simple and easy because it's going through currently undeveloped land. And then the other one, a little bit more complicated because it involves, A, the overpass over the road, the railroad, and then the land, uh, encroachment into occupied land.
So then if you take that alternative and you try and move forward with that, then we, what happens with this, with proposed alternative to try and get it on the list so that not just in a short term with two thousand cars, but we're now looking at sixty-seven approximately percent of through traffic that's still going through Waxall right now with more traffic to come. And that's not just from houses and building, that's coming from traffic that's passing through the town of Waxall that is affecting the town of Waxall with trucks getting stuck on the railroad tracks and more traffic to come if in fact, or when sixteen is widened. So it's broadening the lens and saying, hey, yeah, there's a short-term Band-Aid, but that Band-Aid can be pulled off of the wound and it's still going to have a long-term effect and problem that we still have not dealt with unless we get it on the list.
Well, with that many years going by though, potentially the southern part could be completed, right? And then connect that to the, the little piece that's south of seventy-five.
So let me kind of take us back to, to really the purpose here. Really, we can, we can go through alternative eight, we'd be happy to go and, and, and come back and, and show you the issues that are gonna, gonna arise. Roundabouts take up a lot of space. Everything on that quarter is gonna get wiped out, every roundabout we talked about. Then the, the lanes widening, everything else gets wiped out. Then the traffic that nobody wants downtown is now going somewhere else nobody wants it. Uh, so i- i- it just begets more and more problems. For me, this is really about continuing to collaborate for the support of what is the shortest distance to the solution and that is the feasibility alignment. It's literally, the Union County sponsored this amendment. They proposed it. The town is not putting this on anybody. We're just part of the fund. Ultimately, this, this, this isn't a, a technical issue. The fact is this is all the, the state of the practice in, in transportation planning. That's why it, it continues to be the only viable solution in this really, i- i- it's a complicated issue, right? We're talking about people's homes. We're talking about a downtown. They, they, they have to be weighed and, and we are the ones that have that weight. Absolutely. And, and that can't be done lightly. But the biggest thing really is, uh, let me find it, let me find it on my, we, we talked about how many missed opportunities there have already been in the history of this. Is this gonna be just another chapter in missed opportunities where we just couldn't get it together? The right thing is right here. It's literally as close as we're ever gonna be in delivering this, getting it funded. We're overdue. That money is due to the town for this project. If we don't take it when it's coming, it's gonna go to somebody else. This project is expensive, yes. Everything doubled in price after COVID. Does that mean it's not a good project? No. This, we're, other people are still gonna be building roads somewhere and they're gonna get the benefit of that and we're gonna be stuck with, oh, we couldn't, we couldn't, we just couldn't come together. We have to come together. There's no other option. This is, this could be the last chapter. It could be, okay, we did the responsible thing, it was hard, but we did it for the right reasons because it's for the region. It's not just for anybody in particular. I- i- it's truly a region and, and, and we've got to treat it that way. There are other issues, yes. The whole southern, what's gonna happen down there? That's not written, that's not anywhere. There, there still can be movement in, in a positive direction, whatever anybody thinks is positive. But as far as. But as far as actually doing something that dovetails into the Parkway West is gonna be great. It's not the long-term solution. It can only handle a fraction of the full capacity. This does it quickly and it does it effectively and it does it long-term. And, and we can, we can continue to spend time and effort and resources working around that, but this is it. It's right here for us to do.
I don't think it does it quickly though, right?
If I'm in a car and I'm going from point A to point B, this does it quickly. And that's what people want. And it, it does it without going through all the places that nobody wants them.
I just wanted to ask something about one of these, uh, conclusions as well, but it sounds a little strange to me. Says, "Without the Waxaw Parkway project, most intersections along NC sixteen will operate at a level of service ERF by year twenty forty-five, whereas with the project, the intersection's LOS improves over no build." So I don't understand though how it could improve anything if it couldn't possibly even be built by twenty forty-five.
Well, right, again, we're gonna be closer to it if we get it funded. And then whatever means we can get to, to speed it up, we'll be able to do. We can't do anything, anything if we don't get it past this stage. And it's either voted up or voted down. There's no take it off. That's not even an option of the amendment.
So when it says would improve, with the project, the intersection's level of service would improve, that, that's sort of just speculative that if it was built, uh, ten years from now or something?
Well, they're, they're running models, so they're, they're running the volumes out to that particular year, assuming that it's in place, correct?
Assuming completion before twenty forty-five.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, you have to pick a, you have to pick a time. If it's in twenty fifty, it's still gonna make an improvement. But again, if it goes away, it's not coming back. It goes right back in the long list of things, oh, it should have been under this and over that and it could have been in the middle of nowhere. Now, I'm sorry, that wasn't an option for me. When I got here, this is what we had and it continues to be the only thing worth fighting for.
Well, I also had a question about in this, um, iteration, the one that's on the CTP, the current one that, um, you know, I guess is the best alignment. It's not a controlled road, correct?
Well, legally, it's, it's not a freeway, so you can't control access. All those properties have to have access to a public facility.
Correct, but as far as development.
It can absolutely, they can get one entrance. It can be right in, right out. That can, that is within the laws of, of the state.
Right in, right out, but it's still to be developed upon. So we can still have thousands of homes on either side and then the Parkway is done before it's built.
You could have anything you want. Really, I mean, basically, eh, they, they, unless we wanna buy the whole parcels, then you can, that's the only way you can control whether there's any other access to it.
Like seventy-four? Like there's, you know, it's just, it's a true, there's no, no homes on either side.
Sure, and that's what they did. They bought everything out. They had all their opportunities to, to access all of those properties, absolutely.
Because, you know, the feeling is that, from what I'm hearing, from when I speak to people, is the concern is that, okay, you're gonna build a two-lane quote-unquote Parkway, because it should really be four, correct? Uh, which we can't do right now.
Right, well, again, to, to, to score it quicker, we, we're reducing the cost, absolutely.
Right, so now if developers come in and they wanna build another Emerson, they can, right? If they get approval and then there's the congestion on those two lanes that was supposed to alleviate traffic.
And again, that's, we're, we're, we're worrying about future issues that.
Yeah.
Uh, again, we're, we have current issues that we're, we're dealing with and the future of downtown Waxaw i- is, is really at jeopardy here. This is what's at stake. If we come down on a Friday, Saturday night and enjoy what we have right now and think about it, hey, what if it had thirty cent, thirty percent less cars? How would, how great would that be? What if it had thirty percent more cars? How terrible would that be?
And so I guess the follow-up question there is, can we do it without the county of Mineral Springs?
I would want to. I mean, again, i- i- if, if, if we've got this amendment out of vote right now, it's only gonna pass with everybody's support.
Well, that's, that's what it is. That's my question really, not, not can we? I don't wanna do it without them either. My point is if they're not on board, this, can this happen?
Not as, not as, not as simply. That, that's the easiest way to get it done. Do, uh, do we have the, the wherewithal to, to, to continue to dig and scratch? I do, um, but again, I'm just a, a cog in the wheel.
You have every opportunity to alter your land use controls along that corridor. Uh, you could update your comprehensive plan for what you wanted to see in that corridor. You could change your zoning districts to what you wanna see on the corridor. You could add an overlay district along the corridor to add additional regulation to that. Those are all options afforded to you. And you could zone the entire corridor employment center. And that would, we, we've done a lot of that already in areas of town for, for one of two reasons. To allow industrial development by right, give an incentive to do that. It's not happening yet. Otherwise, it forces people to have to come and go through a rezoning process if they wanna do something different there. So, I mean, those are all afforded to the board. Uh, we, we can't argue that people won't wanna build on, on a new road because they will. But, uh, the, the town has options, uh, for that.
Well, and this also leads directly to the land where Polo Grounds is proposed, right? So, you know, all of those folks are gonna be cramming this in.
And that's a good point because for the record, there has not ever been and there is currently not a site plan ever submitted for that. The, the only thing that has occurred is a, is a consultant put out a website wanting to talk about public financing options. And they had a public meeting that had nothing to do with any application. Completely irresponsible. I can't explain it. That's what happened. The town had nothing going on there.
Although the application was in, but they didn't pay the fee.
There was no site plan, no fee. There was nothing to, to consider.
But I mean, they, they had an application ready to go. They just didn't move forward with the fee.
Site plan or money is nothing that moves forward.
Well, right, but they had a neighborhood meeting with three hundred plus people.
That's, that's them talking to people out. They can do that. They, they can do that. We, we don't have anything officially, uh, uh, actually occurring there.
Well, the point is that, you know, people have been told it's not a thing, but it's a thing because they had a neighborhood meeting, they had very expensive.
It's not the town's thing. It's not the town's thing.
They still have a very fancy website.
They do. The internet doesn't disappear things.
No, I'm just saying the intention is there. So when people hear it's not a thing, they feel like, well, no, I was at the meeting, you know, they had food trucks and they had drinks and they had renderings and Scott Stone was not happy with what happened that day.
Yeah, no, and there you go. I mean, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because we were not happy either. It was completely absurd and irresponsible.
Right, so it's not that, you know, it might not be technically a thing, but it's in the ether and it could be a thing.
And, and, but for this project to suffer because of speculation, that, that's not the point and I think that's what James so well-craftedly did. I mean, these were the facts. These are the facts that have been coming forward for, for decades. We're now at this point, we're at this point to do the right thing for the right reasons. And i- it's getting squirrely and if it disappears, this will be much more impactful than any development that does or doesn't happen. This will be much more impactful than any development that does or doesn't happen. Because this is as, as clean as you're gonna get a project like this. They, they have impacts. This is really as, as concentrated as we can make it, given everything that's already gone past.
But it does impact people's homes that are currently in our homes.
Impacts an entire downtown. And those people really deserve to know what's gonna happen. They, they still get a, a full generation or two use of their home and then they actually get bought out above market rate at the current going rate. If the project actually gets funded and, and moves through the, the, the process, just that line doesn't mean that's where it's gonna go. That's just where it makes a lot of sense, but none of the real hard work has started yet. We're still at the beginning of the beginning and hopefully the end of, of, of all the, the, the preface.
Is there any more questions from the board on any of these proposals or any of these plans? This is an informational meeting and it's meant to be interactive, so any more questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I'm wanting to understand what we're doing here.
We're doing exactly what we've done. We've presented alternatives to the existing Parkway for the purpose of answering the board's questions and to inform the community that alternatives have been thoroughly reviewed, vetted and considered. If there are other alternatives that people wanna put forward that other municipalities and agencies wanna consider, then those we can also consider as well. But the purpose of this is to let folks know what the alternative is.
So what is the, what is the concern? Is there a concern from certain board members over the alignment that Waxaw has already approved? Is, is there, what is the concern there? I'm, I'm just trying to get.
The concern has been mainly the outcry from the folks, basically the general population that we haven't looked at alternatives. And I'm being told that this has been around since ninety-two and that we've looked at this and we've looked at that. But when I hear we've looked at stuff, I haven't seen stuff to look at.
Well, so.
This has given us stuff to look at and stuff to consider so that when we do proceed with either this plan or any other plan, we can do it feeling more informed, better informed.
I didn't look, question. Did we have meetings here in the PD where the public was invited to see these plans and wasn't there a study that was conducted that said that this, the Waxaw Parkway was number one on the list of things that people needed? And at that time, wasn't this discussed?
Yes.
And it has been discussed?
So there's, there's been multiple opportunities to discuss it. And the first. And again, but the idea was to present alternatives. Because at those meetings, alternatives to Parkway East necessarily were not being presented.
But you said that they didn't know, didn't see and, you know, they had questions about.
Alternatives.
But, okay, just alternatives, but not about.
Everybody has seen the land. I understand that we've done an excellent job in getting all the public feedback on the existing, um, alignment. It's just the question of have we, have we looked at it? Have we considered it? That's what this meeting is about.
So I, I understand that there's people who think that alignments have, uh, different alternatives haven't been presented in the past. Um, probably those people haven't lived here very long. Um, as Mayor Becker pointed out, uh, the, what was, the Polo Grounds used to be called the Pittenger Property, which is what we always called it. He was, was he Senator Pittenger? Was that correct? Yes. Um, so everybody, back when Waxaw annexed it in for Senator Pittenger, we all knew something big was gonna go there. That's been no secret. So this idea that this new alignment is, is just for this particular property, that's not true because it's, it's not even, the Pittenger property was there before it was called the Polo Grounds, which I don't even think, it's not even a name now for it. And not only that, when, when Mayor Becker and I went and visited, what I was talking about, the Treehouse Property, which is, if, probably y'all don't know about this, but there was this TV show about making tree house, building tree houses and there was this, um, property owner that was on that TV show. They built the treehouse there. And this alignment, which is the one that's currently on there now, was going through the Treehouse Property. This room in two thousand seventeen maybe, I don't remember, full, standing room only, full of people because everybody was fired up about the Treehouse Property. Mayor Becker and I went out and met with that property owner, walked all around his property. It's a beautiful neighborhood. Is that Waxaw Plant Meadows Plantation? Is that what it is? Yes. Um, so there's a long history of this. Everybody got fired up. It was actually the big election topic that year. That was the year Brenda and I first ran for office. So this has been around a really long time and it's always been a political hot button issue. For me, the most important thing is to impact the least amount of homes. And where we have, have it now from the, the, on the alignment we approved has the least amount of properties affected. And to me, that is the most important thing. And Mineral Springs uses, comes right through our downtown, wherever they're going, if they're going to Charlotte, they come through our downtown. So it really upsets me that they are fighting this alignment when their citizens are using our roads through town. Same with, um, people out in the county. They are coming through Waxaw. This is a regional issue. This is not just Waxaw traffic. The county has in the past supported the alignment that we passed and I don't understand why this is all of a sudden becoming a political issue again. We have the very best alignment plan right now.
I mean, one of the things I'll highlight is I've asked about alternatives. I've heard that there are alternatives and my question has been answered. So as mayor, I have the right to ask that question and I have the right to present the results, that answer. So that's what this exercise is about, on top of building collaboration with our neighbors and our county. That's what all this is about. This is letting folks know that we've looked at it. It answers the question that we've looked at alternatives.
Okay, so how, so I saw your photo op with Mayor Becker and Commissioner Helms here. Um, that you're, and so how, how is that conversation going as far as? Because it didn't sound tonight like it was going very well, so.
Well, tonight we saw somebody addressing an issue from the last meeting, which was unnecessary. As explained during that last meeting, irons were in the fire. I give you an iron. So this was basically being cooked up while someone was writing a resolution. So again, this is being done to present alternatives, to show the public, to show myself and to show our other new board members what the alternatives really are. So we've seen it. I think folks around the county and around the other municipalities have seen it. And now we can move forward from this more informed. That's the goal.
And I don't think that resolution helped to bring partners together. I really don't. And I said that at the last meeting and I will stand by that. I, I don't wanna go back and forth. I'm just saying.
And that's, that's.
You wanted to know about the photo op.
Question and that's.
I'm answering that.
It's just to let folks know alternatives have been considered. And I think we're still looking at other alternatives, but when you get right down to it, this one still looks very attractive, so.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that.
That's why we're doing this. We're doing it so people know that we're looking at the alternatives and we're not just going with the first thing we see. And I know there's a long, rich, deep history with this, but some of us on the board haven't been here though. So we have the right to ask the question and the question's been answered. All right, we'll move on to leadership reports. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just two quick things. You'll see at your, uh, place, the, uh, budget book, printed copy is there for you to take home with you. And then, uh, lastly, just wanna say, uh, uh, how much I'm, I'm proud of all of our staff that was out on, uh, July fourth for the parade. It was an outstanding, uh, parade and, uh, kudos to Parks and Rec staff, to police staff, to public services staff, um, all of our volunteers, as well as our, uh, board members and everybody else that were participating in that. I, I particularly had a good time in the very last float there. Uh, as Uncle Sam, that was pretty fun. It's the only downside was, is how hot that costume was, but, uh, uh, it was well worth it. So just wanna say, uh, uh, thank you to everybody that was involved in that for a very, uh, very good day. The weather, uh, uh, albeit hot, but turned out really nice.
There was a little breeze.
Yeah.
There was no breeze.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Sabinski, we do have an update. Something happened over the weekend?
A few things, not too many. Um, so I wanted to give y'all an update on all cool things program-wise. You have at your spot an updated program sheet. And, um, we also have Jammin' this Friday at the Community Corner at, uh, seven, eight, excuse me, seven PM. Um, off the record is our performers on Friday night, so please come out and join us. Also, it is Park and Rec Month. All cool things are happening this month and so look out for more social media on that. And we are partnered up with the Union County Park and Rec with the passport of coming out and checking out cool things in Waxaw. So please join us for that. Again, the program guide for online listeners, uh, please check that out and that has gone on until December. And some updates on some cool projects that just finished up. We are now the brand-new owners of New Light. We are now the brand-new owners of new lights at Nesbit Field Three. Um, they just got new LED lights for the field. Everybody's super excited about them. They're working great. Um, so that's a new addition, uh, to the park system. And I wanted to thank everybody involved, the park, uh, staff and planning and engineering helped out tremendously on that. So, I appreciate that. Um, next to reiterate, uh, what Jess said, the Fourth of July Parade was a huge success. I wanted to say thank you to all the, um, main players, the Park and Rec team, uh, the events programs and the park group. Holistically worked together to make a successful event, which I truly appreciate. The extra special help, um, from our support teams, uh, public services, PD, Fire, played a central role to making sure that we're safe and healthy and making sure logistically we made that happen. Our community partners, the Waxaw Beddington Rotary Club, um, brought down the flags again to decorate our downtown, which we truly appreciate. And all the wonderful volunteers, which is over seventy volunteers that helped this parade happen, which is a great help with crowd control, parking and cleanup, which is considerably when you have that many people downtown. Um, also would like to thank the mayor for the opening statement. Pastor Mike, um, Ackerson from Forest Hill Church, um, the Pledge of Allegiance from PAC fifty-three and Ms. Christina Long, who gave me goosebumps when she came up and sang. So, I just want to say a special thanks to all those players, um, for making the event such a success. I want to give it also a shout out. We made the cover of the State Recreation, um, magazine that comes out monthly um, for the downtown park playground. So, I'm super excited that we are getting state recognition for, um, all the cool amenities that we're providing for our citizens. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Awesome.
Uh, no. Oh, I was just gonna...
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, every year at, um, during July fourth time, we get questions about, um, why we aren't doing fireworks anymore.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I was just wondering if you could just give a quick synopsis of why we're not doing that anymore.
Yes. So, uh, I came in seventeen and, um, that first year I was mainly observing everything to make sure kind of like what the delay of the land was. In eighteen, um, met with our fire and police and other, um, departments on the viability of continuing with fireworks. Um, it became a safety issue. Uh, and then, um, the council at the time asked for, uh, the Park and Rec team to kind of vet out different alternatives, where to go and where to have the, the fireworks. So, we spent six months on looking at those alternatives. At the end of the day, we couldn't find one that was in the municipality limits of Waxaw. And, um, with talking with fire and police, we, it came a safety concern on having such a regional event without a safe way of pulling it off with all those people. Um, so that was kind of the synopsis on it. So, at that time, the councils tabled it until we were able to, um, find a more suitable place within the municipality of Waxaw. And hopefully with new networking of roads and, um, if land comes available for us to have that regional area, that would be awesome.
Is one of the main concerns the size of the crowd that'll be drawn?
So, at the time, we had over twenty thousand people down at that eighteen event, which, um, became gridlocked at, um, the corner, it was actually where the Parkway ends or starts at, um, or sixteen ends, at the, uh, post office and CVS. We had it...
Right, with the shopping center, all in there with people and crowds.
Yeah, and so we had where, um, kind of like the east, um, I have to get my bearings. Um, we had in the field, um...
Where the farmer's market is.
Where the farmer's market is. Thank you. Uh, and then that gave us our, our bubble for the fall zone. And then we had the people basically in the food line and all over Waxaw, literally into downtown, up to Curriton, um, to watch. When the fireworks actually happened, everything goes gridlocked. And I have, I go through what-if scenarios. I know my, my partners in crime, PD and Fire, do the same. And it, those what-ifs, very scary. Um, so that brought us to those decisions.
Thank you. That's helpful.
No, no worries. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Ashley.
Hey, guys. Um, I want to thank you guys for passing the proclamation tonight in support of Independent Retailer Month. And I wanted to give you guys some background on that, on what that is. So, this is a month-long nationwide celebration for small independently-owned businesses. Uh, this happens in July every year, um, all over the country. Um, our small independently-owned businesses in Waxaw plays such a crucial role in our economy. Um, they keep our dollars local, but also support people that live, work and invest here. Um, so we at Downtown Waxaw, at our Downtown Waxaw Association, are encouraging people to shop local all month long. Um, July is often a slower month for our retailers with people out on vacation with school out and it's hot. Um, so it's a really important month, um, to support your small businesses, um, during the summer. Um, it also makes sure to keep your dollars local. Um, so this weekend, we actually have a special shopping event all weekend long in, in downtown. Um, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, July twelfth through fourteenth, um, a lot of our businesses will have some extended shopping hours, exclusive deals and activities all throughout downtown. Um, we'll also be doing a giveaway for our new downtown gift card program. So, come shop downtown this weekend. You can find out all of our information on our Facebook page, downtownwaxaw.com.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next up, Assistant Town Manager, Matt.
Thank you. Um, first, I want to apologize to the board and particularly Commissioner Wedge. If I got a little frustrated, I didn't mean to be competitive. I think I have PTSD on this subject, but...
I'm Italian. Don't worry about it. We get it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, but again, I remain committed to serve everybody on the board, um, in the, in, in, in that role, for sure. Um, specifically to that point, our paving contract is out for advertising for this summer. Uh, and so that'll be due back. We'll open bids next Tuesday and, uh, and line up. That will likely happen sometime at the end of July to August, um, to do some, some paving of our, of our roads in our annual contract. Um, there's also current construction on North Providence Street to, uh, fix some, some really narrow turning radiuses on that street and, and make it a lot easier for the new traffic patterns that are coming about, uh, to navigate there. And that'll be done this week and, um, and, and really be an improvement as well. And then we're also working with DOT to repair the curb line. We've got that double curb line on East South Main Street in front of Maxwell's Block where there's an old curb and then there's a new like eight-inch curb and it's, it's, it's been a mess for, for decades. Since they're going to be paving in August, we're going to go ahead, pull out that, that non-standard curb, put in a standard curb. It's going to be a little wonky in the interim condition because the curb's going to be higher than the road and there'll be a little, uh, wedging in the parking spaces. You won't really feel it, um, you'll, you'll feel it when you're in a car. Um, but then when, when DOT comes through, they're going to mill all that out and, and pave right up to that new edge and it's going to be a brand-new block. And, and really, you won't worry about door swing. You won't worry about tripping over that curb ever again. And, uh, I'm really excited about that and happy to, to provide that information.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Deputy Chief Brad Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Nice to meet you, man. Uh, I'm going to start tonight by going over a few of our statistics, uh, statistics for our numbers, uh, in the Police Department. Forgive me, this is my first time. All right. Uh, this month, we have wrote a hundred and fifty-two state uniform citations. We've wrote a hundred and ninety-eight warning citations. We have answered two thousand nine hundred and ninety calls this month. We have worked forty-two traffic collisions in the month of June, which is up ten collisions since May, probably due to kids being out of school. There's more traffic on the roadways. We've done two thousand one hundred and forty-six preventative patrols and building checks. Um, and we've made thirty-two arrests. We've got, currently, we've got fifty-seven active, open investigations that, uh, our Criminal Investigations Bureau is actually actively working. Training this month, or actually June twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, uh, we held active shooter training at Kensington Elementary. During those two days, we had every officer in the Police Department attend the training. Last year, we had the same training, but we held it at Waxaw Elementary. Uh, so that's good that every officer has been through that, that type of training. Our school resource guys, they are currently at a conference this week in Concord, learning new ways to, or new ideas, uh, to bring back to their schools. A couple upcoming events to be mindful of. We have National Night Out, which is August the sixth. We, we're having it out here in the parking lots, the entire parking lot, uh, from five o'clock until nine o'clock. We're going to have a bunch of good time. We're going to have vendors. We're going to have fire department, a bicycle rodeo, a, uh, bouncy houses. Uh, some of the guys are going to be cooking hot dogs and hamburgers. So, if you're not busy, come on out. It'll be a great time. Um, a few dates to be mindful of. Well, some of them have passed, but just to keep you up to date. June eighth, um, I'm not sure if Chief mentioned this to you earlier, but we had coffee with a cop at the museum. Um, it was a great time. I seen the mayor there. Thank you, sir, for attending. Um, June eleventh and the eighteenth, we had Veterans Coffee Connection at the American Legion. It's a, uh, they just started it last month. It's, uh, informal time for vets to come have coffee, just talk about their past, uh, talk about their future as well. June fourteenth, we had Girl Scout tours of the Police Department. That was a good time. Um, June twenty-first and the twenty-third, or actually the twenty-first through the twenty-third, was our annual Explorer Camping Trip, which was held at Kane Creek. Um, great time. Kids enjoyed it. Um, it was hot, but they enjoyed it. Um, June twenty-seventh, we're having the Veterans Coffee House at Round Top Church. Uh, me and some other guys will be present at it. July thirteenth, which is in the future, at the Powerhouse Karate on North Broom Street, we're having a female self-defense class. So, it'll be fun. Come on out, uh, learn some new stuff. Uh, the, July twenty-fifth will be the Veterans Coffee House again at Round Top Church. That's held the last week of every month. So, um, I'm not a vet, unfortunately, but they allowed me in, so come on out. Get served breakfast. It's a great time. Um, and also, before I leave, guys, I want to thank each and every one of you for approving the K-9 grant that you approved. Uh, we actually went last week, picked out a dog. The handler started class yesterday in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, so he'll be there for ten weeks. So, thank you. I really, really appreciate it. Um, do y'all have any questions for me?
Can I pet that dog?
Yeah, you should pet it. Awesome. Any more questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, y'all.
Uh, any comments from the Commissioners?
Go for it. Just wanted to personally welcome Cindy Reed, our new attorney. Um, very happy to have you and hope you still want to come back. Um, also wanted to thank the elected officials who attended tonight and gave their comments. Uh, Vice Chair Brian Helms from Union County Board of Commissioners and, uh, Mayor Rick Becker from, uh, Mineral Springs. Really appreciate you guys putting your input in there and, uh, want to wish all the best to Melody and your, you and Diva.
Thank you. Alrighty, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. This meeting is now adjourned.